I call this board meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will pledge to the flag. Hold outside, I guess. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire emergency, an alarm will sound. Please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everybody please turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation. And do we have any additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. I would like a motion for the consent agenda one through nine.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Communications correspondence.
Yes, in your board package, you actually had your third marking period, the results for honor roll and high honor roll. Again, you can see our kids doing very, very well. You have a comparison to last school year. Also, we have beautiful moving updates ceremony on Friday, June 16th. In fact, the Lord, it was held on June 21st at First Presbyterian Church and wonderful graduation that was held this past Friday at Hampton Sports Complex. That's it for communications.
All right. And as far as points of pride, we have the golf team that may be coming in, but they, Tyler Koch was voted the Democrat and Chronicle Co-athlete of the Week for shooting a team low score of 77. Congratulations to Tyler. And Camp Raider was held for grades six through 12 on May 25th, and this was a huge success with 32 teams competed in a fantastic day of teamwork, school pride, and a whole lot of fun. The STEAM Day in the elementary school was also May 25th, a full day of hands-on activities centered in science, technology, engineering, art, and math. It was a day of exploration, creativity, teamwork, mixed in with a lot of learning and fun.
Softball coach Dan Dickens was named Section 5 C2 Coach of the Year, and senior Madison DeVore was named Section 5 C2 Player of the Year. Congratulations to them. Junior Braden Fonte's essay entitled "What Memorial Day Means to Me" was Matthew Cleary's post first-place choice, earning him a cash award of $200. Junior Rachel Richter won second place. Juniors Kalen Jake and Gianna McCallum tied for third place. Congratulations to them.
Senior Tyler Douglas was recognized by the Matthew Cleary Post for his Eagle Project, remembering our veterans, placed in the town cemetery behind the Evangelical Stone Church on Church Street. Cemetery is the oldest in the village and has many Civil War veterans buried there. Fourth and fifth grade students created posters for the Legion Post. Six students had their posters selected to win a cash prize. There's Mason Walter, Gabriella Anachi.
Nate.
Josh Lynn Pettenala, Wyatt Preston, Skylar Smith, and London Mattingly.
The fifth grade students and juniors participated in mentor training, and their match day was on June 9th. There were several local agencies collaborated together to produce the DWI simulation at the high school. It was a very impactful presentation for the juniors and seniors. The pre-K students have graduated and they are moving on to kindergarten, and congratulations to the elementary chess club who took first place.
Yes, also, we had 100% of our varsity teams earned the Honor Roll Scholar-Athlete Team Award from New York for the spring sports. All of our varsity teams won that, as well as we had a beautiful prom on June 3rd at Wildwood Country Club, highest attendance in over five years. King Johnny Medina, Queen Theresa Vandewater, Prince Braden Fonte, and Princess Gianna McCallum. Also, senior Luke Donahue was named LCA Exceptional Senior for baseball, and seniors Madison DeVore and Avery DeMarco were named LCA Exceptional Seniors for softball.
I'll do Bellix there. Elementary schools, grades three through five, field days were a blast, and due to poor air quality last week, K12 field days will be on June 15th.
That's about two weeks old. Word will.
For those that, we actually had a board meeting scheduled for the 12th, and we had to cancel, so that's why that's there.
Was.
Yes. And then also, just, you have the Maine Savvy Raiders, it's listed in your backup notes. So a lot of great things happening.
Thank you. Guests of the board, Mrs. Barb Burns is here. Why don't you take it away?
So, Mrs. Burns.
I'm up there.
Yeah, just because of the microphone, won't be able to hear you.
Well, the kids could hear me if I scream now.
So, Mrs. Burns is our internal auditor, and she did an evaluation of the district.
Um, yeah, the claims auditing is going great, even with Katie not helping Jeremy anymore. You know, everything is still in order, and we're finding everything, or there's not much to find usually, thank God. So, it's going well. The auditors, when I speak to them, they're satisfied with everything. They really haven't asked me for anything new. I don't know if you guys want to see anything new. We started the purchase order confirmations last year when Jeremy came. They seem to be getting a little better. End of year is hard because, you know, you need things, and, you know, sometimes Jeremy don't think it's to the purchase orders until after they need it, so. But, you know, a lot of it's expected, so. I don't know if you guys have any questions, or if you want me to do anything new or change. I'm stuffing the envelopes now with the checks, so that, but I've done that at Abon for years. You know, that's what the auditors over there have requested, so, just so that I'm the last person to see those checks with the envelope, so that make sure they're not going anywhere as they're not supposed to, so.
Okay. We don't have a problem stuffing envelopes, do we, Mr. Nardone?
I love it, thank you. It is a, it is a good added internal control, after you mentioned that, having you be the last person to stuff them, because, you know, auditor's fear that you could alter them, and have my auditorium allow that stamp out of that, so, it's been great, thank you.
No problem. Glad to do it, I'm used to it, so. All ready?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Oh, the graduation was great. Everybody's speeches and everything were very nice, so. I enjoyed it. Been a couple of years since I've been there, so.
Nice to have you there.
Yep, thanks. Thanks for inviting us back, the ex-board members.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Well, probably.
I think Mr. Reed is out there.
Yep. Do we have the Unified Genesee United Champions?
Not out here.
No? They did not make it. Let's move on to our Section 5 4x800 Relay Champs.
Mr. Freeman.
All right, this year, we have introduced, first of all, thanks for having us. Second, I'll introduce you to our 4x8 relay team. Joni Wazickel, Olivia Amberis, Lily Clement, and Ava Amberis is the fourth, who wasn't able to make it tonight. These guys ran the 4x8 all year long. You started a little late, right, Lily? Unfortunately for them, all of them are multiple event athletes, so by the time they get to run the 4x8 in a regular league meet, they're pretty tired. So, we traveled to Dundee Memorial Day weekend, and last year, the 4x8 team finished second to Byrd Reverend, and these guys were not having that again this year. So, they, it was the second event of the night, so they were, they were well rested. Ran, each of them ran the race of their life, turned in their fastest time for the season, and earned themselves the Section 5 Championship.
Nice. That's awesome. Congratulations.
And Mr. Freeman, they all come back next year, too, huh?
Yes, they do.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, girls.
You can't find much nicer kids.
No, no. Congratulations, girls.
All right. Mr. Reed, golf team? There we go.
Our numbers will alter then.
Thanks for having us. I have Liam McCardle here, seventh grader, on the Ursa Golf Team. Liam started out the year kind of towards the back of our lineup in terms of where he was scoring, and then by the time sectionals rolled around, we play six, we score four. Liam was one of our four players, actually had a great front nine, and kind of gave us some breathing room heading onto the back nine, so. Thank you for having us, has our section back trophy. If you guys have any questions, I can answer them, but.
So tell us something about the season.
So, the season, we won our league. Not a lot of competition for us in our division. There's three divisions in Livingston for golf. We did schedule some crossovers, and we beat the teams in Division Two, including Leroy. We lost to Livonia, which broke our, like, I don't even know the number, it was like 30-something match on beaten streak where we lost to Livonia. That was right before sectionals, but then we got back on it, and we rallied and went through sectionals. One forfeit in there with Bishop Carney, but that's, when you get into the spring sports, sometimes things are a little wonky, so. Kids played great over at Livingston.
And you have a strong nucleus returning next year as well?
We do. We graduate two seniors, but two of the seniors were in the sixth, top six that played in matches on a regular basis, but in the sectional final, both seniors were thrown out, so the four people that we scored are all returning.
Okay. And Liam, congratulations with your tournament win on Monday.
Thank you.
And your travel league. Congratulations.
I'll take the trophy, sir.
There you go. I'm rounding up.
Must be cooler out in the hall.
The breeze.
It looks sweaty.
Evening, guys. Mr. McCon, you put them through a workout already?
We did.
I figured that.
But that's not, we're gonna, that good. All right, so this year, these guys up here had a lot of individual and team success, since in tennis, you get both, you have individual sectionals and team sectionals. They started mid-May with individual sectionals, and we had the individual singles sectional champ in Class B3, who was Lorenzo Martell. We had the doubles champions in Class B3, which was Garrett and Oliver Johnson. And that, yeah, and then also had the runners-up in Class B3. They actually played there, teammates in the finals. That was Jer Anderson and Nate Dow. And also, because this year, for the first time, you were able to make an exceptional entry, if you thought you had enough players that could actually, you know, compete and be seeded in the top eight, and I thought these guys might be top four, and so we entered Michael Gier and Max Paray as a third doubles team. Normally, you can only enter two singles players and two doubles teams, but we asked for an exceptional entry. It was granted, and these guys, not only did they go and have success, they took third place at there. So they all got sectional patches in individuals, and we had seven players, which would be the most out of any Section 5 school in tennis in the last 20 years, actually send seven players to state qualifiers, and that's because of the exceptional entry and the success these guys had. So, that was the individual part of the season, and then in terms of the team part, they were 14-2 as a team this year. The only loss during the league came to Livonia, real close 3-2 match, but they won Livingston County Division Two, because Livonia's Division One. And then in sectionals, at the end of the season, had a real, let's say, grueling, almost five-match run in the last week of May. They played Lions in the quarterfinals out here, won that match 5-0. Then in the, was it semifinals out here, played Camp El Sabona, beat them 5-0, but then went over to Batavia and had a real tough match in the sectional final, and ended up beating Oakfield Alabama, who won this class last year, B3, and beat them 3-2 over in Batavia to win this trophy right here, so. And then still had two more matches to go, because last year, for the first time, Section 5 and New York State for tennis has now a state team tournament, and so there were four Class B champs in Section 5 in the small schools. It was us in B3, Leroy in B2, Wayne in Class B1, and Naples in B4, so we ended up drawing Leroy and played the next day over in Abon and beat Leroy, what was it, 4-1, I think, and then played Wayne over at HFL with a chance to go to States, and Wayne nipped us 3-2, real, real good, close match over there, it was a great match, but Wayne ended up winning that one, and Wayne ended up actually winning against the team from Section 6, Maple Grove, and got to go down to New York City to play, where they play actually the US Open and the tennis championships down there. So, young team, these guys, when they were starting, were all juniors this year, and so the hope is to, you know, work hard and try to do it again next year, but it was a good season. And thank you, guys, for the courts out there and everything, I have to say. You know, that certainly has been a huge boost to the program, the facilities that we have, you know, has made it, you know, great for these guys, and they use them a ton, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
Just makes some room for that. Y'all are just good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thanks.
And although they couldn't make it, the Section 5 Unified Genesee United Champions were in year two of our Genesee United basketball program, which is a combo Calmum, Leroy, and Pavilion. That team won their trophy as well, and the Special Olympics will be making a plaque for the other two schools, as well as one that we will have for here, so. Congratulations to them officially. Public forum is next on the agenda. This portion of the agenda is for district residents, district staff, and/or parents and guardians of students to speak to the board. However, the board members will not respond. This is a time for the board to listen, and when appropriate, a response will be provided to the speaker. Individuals who wish to speak must sign in, state their name and address prior to speaking, and limit their comments to three minutes. Comments or questions naming specific personnel or students are to be addressed privately to protect the rights of the individuals. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. There's a flag. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. We have Mr. George Coles signed up to speak to us today. Yes, please.
Thank you. My name is George Coles, and I've lived in California for close to 50 years. I'm a father and a grandfather, and I'm very concerned and want to know why our middle school students have access to pornography and filth in our school libraries. I talk to my grandkids face-to-face. We don't FaceTime, and we don't do any of that. We play together. I ask them how they're doing in school, and I'm very proud of them. Thank you for all the presentations you have here for the sports and everything, but I don't care about your race, your gender, your religion, or your politics. I care about our children supposedly getting an education, learning about reading, writing, and arithmetic, and you people seem to be destroying their innocence by allowing this filth to be available to them in our schools, hiding behind your rules and regulations and your policies and your foaming district beliefs and core values. Number five in your list says, value transparent, frequent, and candid communication. Number 11 says communicate with the community at large for an understanding of the mission, vision, beliefs, and values of the steps needed to monitor and adjust achievement for all. I don't think you even follow your own rules. I'm a senior citizen, and I don't have a computer, or emails, or a smartphone, and I do have a telephone, and I have a mailbox, and I would appreciate being informed of your board meetings and proposals. And in closing, it seems to me that you all think you're mighty and high with all your fancy words and double talk, allowing these things to happen, but what you are doing goes against God and His word. In the Book of Matthew 18, verse 6, Jesus says, "If anyone causes any of these little ones to sin, it would be better for them to have a large millstone on around his neck and be drowned in the sea." Someday, you all will stand before God and be judged for your actions, and on that day, you will know who is the high and who is the mighty.
That, nobody else has signed up for public forum? We do not have a superintendent's report, so all business, adoption of the code of conduct, resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the district-wide code of conduct for the 2023-2024 school year. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. Number two, annual approval of the district-wide emergency response plans, resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the project SAVE, school district-wide emergency response plans for 2023-2024, per the Commissioner's Regulation 155.17. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So, upon approval of this, then the school buildings will actually create their plans and will be brought to you in July.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. Board of Education Evaluation Discussion. Everybody has seen the evaluation that is there in our backup notes, and that is our final document. Is there any, any reason that that shouldn't be our final document at this point? No? Okay, so that's wrapped up. Number four, approval of the 2023-2025 Board of Education Goals. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the attached list of board goals for the 2023-2025 school years, and that again is the goals that Mr. Malasani has put together based on our Board of Education evaluation and all of our discussions. In that, I believe he has included just about every point that one of us has made throughout the year. Is there anybody that would like those further refined, or I think we're there?
I think they're good.
I think they look good.
Okay, so can I have a motion that we approve the attached list of board goals for the 2023-2025 school year?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. New business, date of the annual organizational meeting, resolved that the Board of Education hold its annual organizational meeting per Board Policy Number 1620 on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. Transfers to reserve funds, resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, pre-authorize any transfers which may be necessary in connection with the fiscal year-end closing of the district books to ensure compliance with Section 131A of the Real Property Tax Law, which is a 4% limit on fund balance. In the event that there is a budget surplus that is greater than that, was greater than what we are able to utilize in our appropriate fund balance, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education take action to authorize transfers to approve reserve funds, including the appropriation of fund balance and reserve contained in the voter-approved 2023-2024 budget. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? New business, number three, approval of, approval of bond resolution, resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the attached bond resolution for the purchase of school buses. Motion, please?
Served.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Did we get the discount ones?
We did.
Good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. Athletic Code of Conduct Presentation and Discussion. Mr. Reed.
I don't know if I can see that far.
Certainly you can get closer, these are pretty sensitive if you need to.
I think I can do some more, so far, I'll see what we got here. I should go. Okay, opposed or clicker?
Yeah.
Okay, so the code of conduct, you know that we review annually, and we've got it in a pretty good place as far as we feel right now, working with Dr. Chanel, as we monitor what goes on. The one major change to the code of conduct will be mixed competition guidelines, so that's when you have boys want to play girls' sport, girls want to play a boy's sport, such as football. Football's like, well, there's girls' flag football, but football's classified as a boy's sport by the state of New York. Wrestling is classified as a boy's sport, so if a female wants to play, there's mixed competition guidelines. We don't offer boys volleyball, so girls volleyball is what we offer, so if a boy wants to play, they would have to go through a mixed competition. So in our code of conduct, we have what the state used to have, state made some changes, so we just are mirroring what the state has changed to. That's a good thing that we've done with our code and with Google, is that with links, quite frequently you'll notice in the athletic guide, that we put a link to the state handbook, because that's what we had to follow. So like, one year, the change was in the transfer rule. Well, they changed it like mid-year, so our language probably would have been a little outdated, but with the link, that language is right there. So, we had zero students that violated the code of conduct, missed contest time in 2023 compared to 2021 and 2122. Participation passes are when the students come into school after 7:45 before 9:15, they have a doctor's appointment or some legal appointment, so there's the report for this school year. It amped up a little bit, I don't know if kids are getting a little more used to it or just not as afraid of it, since they understand how it works a little better if they are running behind. Some of those are pretty, between like 7:55 and 8 o'clock, too, so anytime that it's late, doesn't matter, they have to use the participation pass. So the participation numbers, the percentages are pretty close, they're down a little bit. However, you've heard me say for four or five years now, when you have fewer kids in the school district, a percentage of a smaller number is even smaller number, so. You know, we're looking at, in sports like both soccers, last year, boys and girls, what not A and varsity, we believe we're going to have JV boys soccer this year, but not girls. We think we'll have JV girls soccer back, if not next year, the following year. There's a strong number of girls that were just in sixth going into seventh grade that participate in soccer. Our volleyball numbers are good, and then we always look at our football numbers. Football's such a difficult sport to play, high rate of injury and things like that, so we monitor the numbers and, you know, make recommendations where need be with mergers and things. we monitor the numbers and, you know, make recommendations where need be with mergers and things. So there's the actual numbers played out, um, across three years. I skipped again, I skipped twenty-two. Now twenty-twenty's in there, I guess. No, the fall of twenty-twenty's not. The one year where COVID would have hit, I think I jumped around it. So you see spring goes to twenty-twenty-one. Those are like possible full years of sport, whereas like the fall of, um, twenty-twenty was pushed back into the spring. So, uh, but we're, you know, getting the numbers back. If you can see, um, the numbers of kids are hovering around one seventy-five, one seventy for boys and girls. Percentages are close. If you get a grade that's interested in a particular sport, if you get a parent that, you know, drags the kids young, when they're young, to the sports and then you get a bubble of kids that, that pump through. So there's the numbers over time. Dual participation, we have not had a lot of, uh, student athletes make it all the way through. I think it's a little more difficult than what they anticipate. They think it might be like summer where they go from a soccer game to a baseball game or a basketball game to a soccer game. And that's really not what it is. They're required to get the practices in. If they have two practices in a day, they would have to go to both practices. They have to choose a primary sport. And if the primary sport has a game, they go to that. Then they have a secondary. If they have a secondary sport contest, they go to that. The consequence usually is they miss practice for their primary. So that creates a little dynamic within the team that the coach has to work on. And we don't see a lot of kids, once they understand what's happening, that are willing to, to do it completely. Again, there are some schools that use it more extensively than we do. I know La Morris is one. In their case, especially in the spring, um, they wouldn't have a golf team if they didn't have track and baseball kids playing golf. So whereas our school, most of the sports were fully, or at least were, we have enough population of kids in the sport that if you have a kid showing up part-time, the other kids are going to be a little bit upset if they're not playing because they're putting the time in. Maybe a school like La Morris where they don't have the full team, like that kid that's part dual participating is saving the other team. So their kids aren't, there's not really any animosity. They're just happy that they have a team. So that, that's kind of my feeling on why we have low numbers now goes. I know our coaches struggle with it a little bit because again, if a kid, let's say, track and tennis, if a kid has a track meet on Wednesday and a tennis match on Thursday and they miss tennis practice the day before, well, Mr. McCollum's got a deep team he just heard him talking about. Those kids are all coming back, not to mention the other kids that are pushing them for time. Like it just creates a pretty tough situation. So, um, the, the one that gets used the most is probably cheerleading in the fall. Coach Carson's pretty flexible with her start times. And so that those kids can make it work. The competitions are frequently on weekends. So they're able not to miss as much. That's why it works for them. Scholar Athlete, again, we had great success. Uh, we did not get the, I get it backwards. It seems like the way they word it is wrong, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. At School of Excellence. So last year we were a school of distinction. All of our, uh, varsity athletic teams made the, uh, grade for the Scholar Athlete. This year we had a couple that did not, team-wise, so we did not get that. We did get the, uh, School of Excellence and we've had that every year since the program's been instituted, except for the one year we were a school of distinction.
Hey Mike, that's an overall average of ninety or higher.
So yeah, what has to happen is for a student athlete to be considered, they have to have a ninety percent average in the period that's measured during the season. So it could be marky period five and six. If it's, uh, not in winter maybe. It could be marky period two in the fall because that just was where it covers. And they have to have a ninety percent. Seventy-five percent of the team's average has to be above ninety. So if there's ten kids, you can't run out, so it'd have to be eight. So that's seventy-five percent. Eight of those kids, you take their average, add it up, divide. If that's above ninety, the team gets it. You may have kids within that eight, eight and a half or eight, I'm sorry, seven and a half, eight, that don't get it, but we still have to use their average. So you might have a kid in there that has eighty-six, eighty-five. But the kids that are above ninety, pull that average up for the team. Individuals that are recognized have to be above ninety. So even if we used a eighty-six and an eighty-five to get down to that total of eight, those bottom two kids are part of the team that's recognized, but they're not actually recognized because for an individual, actually above ninety. If that makes any sense at all. So the good news, we had two sectional champions. You saw them here tonight, tennis and golf. We had the track relay team, which is individual, and the unified, uh, basketball team won the competitive tournament. So we had a very successful spring, uh, in terms of our teams winning titles. And there's some pictures in here. I did not know that the Batavia Daily News was going to come out and do that. If you've seen that, that's.
Oh, no, you are, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we pulled the same pictures from Mr. McCardo. And again, Unified is interesting. They don't have, uh, sectionals for it. Um, we asked to be placed in the competitive bracket, so they have a year-end culminating tournament. We asked to be in the competitive bracket and we went two and O in the competitive bracket and then we won the, uh, trophy in the tournament. We have six Cal, had six Cal-Mum's kids, two Leroy students and one Palin's student. And, um, those parents are super appreciative. We met with them at the monument after they won and they couldn't have said nicer things about our school and how we've kind of taken the lead. Pavilion started bowling last year, so that's something that we'll look at here to see if we have any students that could participate in that. But, um, and other schools haven't talked about it, but it's hard to get off the ground. Like a couple of schools are like, yeah, we're going to start it next year. I'm like.
Took us two or three, didn't it?
Well, it took, yeah, we were about ready to go and COVID hit. So, yeah, so it took a while. I mean, it's, you know, it's something every year we just have to make sure you have enough people to, to do it. It's not, it's not the easiest. And then there's our unified team at the monument. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So other than that, everything that aligns in the Athletic Code of Conduct actually comes from the Code of Conduct. So that's why you see this after the traditional Code of Conduct. So thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, so approval of the Athletic Code of Conduct. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the Athletic Code of Conduct for the 2023-2024 school year. Motion, please?
Make it.
And a second?
I will second.
Liz. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number six, approval of the Professional Development Plan for 2022 through 2025. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the Professional Development Plan 2022 through 2025 for the 2023 to 2024 school year. Motion for this, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
I'll second.
And the reason we don't have a big presentation on is because it is the same as what was presented last year, but we have to approve it every, every year, even though it's a three-year plan.
That's correct.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carried. Number eight, approval of the Response to Intervention Plan. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the Response to Intervention Plan for 2022 through 2025. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So again, this is a plan that the Board approved for a three-year period. We have to do it annually. And this is interventions to make sure that our kids that are struggling are provided interventions, may that be regular coursework or through a state test or through, um, a Regents exam or through parent or teacher recommendation. So these are all the interventions that we have in place pre-K-12.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number nine, Caledonia Recreation Transportation Requests. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved bus requests from the Caledonia Recreation for the following field trips as listed. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
I'll make it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number ten, Approval of Commissioner Regulation Eight NYCRR Part One, Two, Three. Let me get a drink of water. Whereas the Board of Education desires that the district's use of the name Red Raiders and indigenous imagery be seen for its historical context and intent, which was to honor indigenous persons of the region and to give form and substance to the competitive nature, institutional pride and indomitable spirit that characterizes the student body both present and past. And whereas in accordance with the requirements of Eight NYCRR Part One, Two, Three, the Board previously eliminated use of the name Red Raiders and indigenous imagery in the district, be it resolved that the name Red Raiders will continue to be respect.
Excuse me, Raiders, yeah. Be resolved that.
Very important. Be it resolved that the name Raiders will continue to be respectfully used to represent the district. The term Red Raiders will not be used. And be it further resolved that the district will not introduce new indigenous imagery in connection with its programs or activities other than for purposes of classroom instruction. And be it further resolved that the district will continue student-focused discussions and will take any additional actions necessary to verify compliance with legal requirements by June thirtieth, 2025. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Acceptance of Bid Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the Cleaning Services Bid from JV Cleaning Services for the 2023-2024 school year. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Cheryl, second.
Uh, any discussion? This is the same company that's been doing the elementary school?
That is correct.
And they will pick up the upstairs of the.
Second floor of the middle high school. The entire building and the elementary minus some large spaces.
Okay.
Unless we fill positions.
Yes, it's unlikely. Yes.
But I mean, that's because of contractual with, with the union. It's, okay. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number twelve, Approval of Extra Class Account. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the opening of an extra class account for the middle high school technology class. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Executive Session Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at six forty-two PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons, matters leading to the appointment and collective negotiations with the superintendent of schools. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? We'll be back. Returns, um, from executive session. We have personnel, uh, I'm asking for a motion for one through three. First, uh, number one, appointment of an elementary assistant principal. Number two, appointment of summer workers. Number three, appointment of elementary summer reading program teachers. Motion, please?
I'll make it. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. Number four on personnel, Approval of Superintendent of Schools Employment Agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approves the employment agreement of the Superintendent of Schools for the period July first, 2022 through June thirtieth, 2026, which supersedes all prior agreements and authorizes the Board President to execute such employment agreement, including due compensation for additional duties fulfilled during the 2022-2023 school year. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. Final Request for Personnel Items Number Five Through Nineteen As Duly Laid Out In The Agenda. Number five, Appointment of Substitute Nurse. Number six, Appointment of Building Maintenance Person. Number seven, Resignation of Elementary Teacher. Number eight, Appointment of Interscholastic Coaches. Number nine, Appointment of Non-Athletic Positions. Number ten, Appointment of Special Education Teacher. Number eleven, Appointment of Occupational Therapist. Number twelve, Resignation of Elementary Teacher. Number thirteen, Appointment of E&amp;L Teacher. Number fourteen, Resignation of Spanish Teacher. Number fifteen, Appointment of Elementary Teacher. Number sixteen, Resignation of E&amp;L Teacher. Number seventeen, Appointment of Spanish Teacher. Number eighteen, Resignation of Bus Driver for Purpose of Retirement. And number nineteen, Approval of Archery Club Advisor. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That motion carried. And a final, uh, bit of business. Mr. Malasani, can you look, uh, for us through your peers at the other districts on whether there is, um, policies in place and if they're enforced for pets on campuses?
Okay.
And get that to us, um, at a future meeting? Okay, Adjournment Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned the meeting of June twenty-seventh, 2023 at nine thirty-four PM. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second? Come on, we want to go home.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Everybody have a good night. Thank you.